Okay. All right, welcome everyone for joining us today. I'm back from vacation and ready to go here. Although, I'm not real happy with the weather here, here in Wisconsin. So, we have today with us Brenda Warren, Dr. Brenda Warren. And Brenda and I met back in 2018. We may have known each other before that, but I don't know, I don't remember that so much. But we worked on a Legislative Dyslexia Study Committee. And from that committee, we were able to pass legislation Act 86, which created the first ever Dyslexia Guidebook for the state of Wisconsin. So that was one of our accomplishments from that committee. But above that, Brenda and I have remained in contact because we are both advocates for good things happening here in Wisconsin. And, you know, around structured literacy and looking out for kids with dyslexia. So let me read her bio and then she will be taking over. So Brenda has been studying and evaluating reading instruction for the past 18 years through three different lenses. As a pediatrician, a school board member, and a parent of a now 25-year-old son with dyslexia. Her main interest has been examining how districts can overcome barriers preventing scientific research, sorry, preventing scientific reading research from fully impacting classroom practice with a goal of ensuring that academic equity becomes a real possibility in our schools. In her 2010, in 2010, her work led her to pursue a PhD in educational leadership to study this topic in more depth. She graduated with her PhD from Cardinal Stritch University in 2018. Her dissertation title, "Closing the Science-to-Practice Gap for Reading Instruction: A Case Study of Two Schools Transitioning From Balanced Literacy to Scientifically-Based Reading Instruction." And I bet that was an interesting study. So without further ado, Dr. Brenda Warren.
Hello, and thanks for inviting me to come speak, Donna. I want to start off with just saying that I don't necessarily have all the answers to this very complex puzzle that all of you are working at in various capacities. But I have spent very, very many hours thinking about how to help district leaders take the steps toward changing their reading instruction toward a more scientifically-based approach. And along the way, I have worked hard in my own district and had some successes, but also some setbacks. And so this will be pretty much a high-level overview of just the issues as I see them with systemic reading change in school districts. My self-appointed role in our district has been to help our superintendents, and I've worked with four of them in my tenure, help them understand why balanced literacy will not be the system that teaches all children to read. It's really been a one-on-one endeavor with each individual superintendent and hasn't yet resulted in any systematic changes because of course, superintendents retire or move on to their next jobs. And then my job would start all over again. So now that I'm not a board member, and actually I've moved out of the state of Wisconsin to be closer to my children. But my goal really is to continue working toward changing the superintendent's knowledge on a more global scale and also helping, helping superintendents become aware of the fact that they really do need to learn about scientifically, scientific reading research and scientifically-based reading instruction. So as I'm sure you all know, if we truly want equity in our schools, we absolutely must teach all children to read. But there is a disconnect related to this in districts. Districts work very hard on achieving equity, but I, but there are just things that I think are getting in the way to achieving the all-children-reading part of equity. One of the biggest ones is many people just don't know what they don't know. And I also think that educators might be somewhat afraid of what they might find out if they dove into the scientific reading research and literature. And so they, in a sense, double down to convince themselves that what they're doing is right for kids. Because nobody wants to think that they're not doing what's right for kids in education. I've not met a single person that, that doesn't want to do his or her very best for children. And as they double down to convince themselves that what they're doing is, is, is best for kids, they certainly have a lot of places they can go that will reassure them that balanced literacy is the best approach for teaching all children how to read. Another thing that, that I've seen is, is focus on growth data in, in a school district. In other words, you know, how, how much are you growing children's knowledge? And they use that growth data to reassure themselves they're on the right track. Even though, in some cases, the school can be exceeding expectations because of, of their growth, but still not yet helping kids attain reading proficiency. And they'll have numbers as, you know, as low as in the 20% for third-grade reading proficiency. And then I also really think that it's hard for people that haven't really studied and spent the time, and of course educators have very little time because they're working so hard in schools, to really learn what they need to know. And I think it's difficult to visualize how to accomplish all children reading proficiently because there really are not that many districts that have achieved that. So they're working on something that, that would be, at this point, a somewhat abstract concept. And so I think that's one of the things that sometimes gets in the way of moving forward to reading instruction that's more successful. So I'm gonna, let's see if I can do this, share my screen. Let's see. I think this will work. I just have one PowerPoint slide. There we go. Can everybody see that? Can you see, Donna? Okay, so I just wanted to provide you with this, to give you an overview of kind of where I'm going to be going with, with this presentation. I'm talking about high-level leaders in districts, their roles, some of their things that get in the way of, of work that they might want to do, and things like that. So I'm gonna start talking with, about the superintendent's role, and then I'll talk a little bit about school boards, and then also a very little bit about legislation and some of the limitations of, of trying to make these changes through legislation. So I'm going to... Should I just leave this up? I'll, I'll just leave it up, except...
Yeah, leave it up, it's fine. Can you make it bigger?
That's a big question. I just changed my screen share, didn't I? You can tell I don't do this very often.
I know, it makes you crazy.
Okay.
Just leave it, you're, wait, oh, maybe press the plus.
Does that work?
Oh, much better, yep.
Except it's too big now, but I'll scroll along. Okay. All right, so, as I've worked with, and again, I've worked with my own superintendents, I've worked, had lots of conversations with other superintendents in other states and also in Wisconsin. And I think one of the biggest things that, that superintendents oftentimes, they don't like teachers and reading specialists. They aren't taught about the science of reading in their training programs. Many of them have never worked in an elementary school because a lot of superintendents come out of the secondary. And they, in some cases, don't even know, they, they don't know what they don't know, and they don't necessarily even know that they need to go out and seek this knowledge. Because of course, they have curriculum people that have spent their, their lives teaching reading and then leading curriculum and things like that. And, and that's who the superintendent tends to, well, and has to trust because the superintendent is not the one that leads the curriculum, unless they're in a very, very small district. So they, so they're in this situation, and I, I kind of have sympathy for this situation because it's a situation that I was in when I first came on the board. I was looking at our reading data. I knew it wasn't good. About the same time, my own son was struggling with reading. And so I was trying to figure out what was going on with him and how to help him. And, and I, as I started reading about reading instruction, and then I'd be in, in, you know, literacy task force meetings and things like that, and I would ask questions. And all I knew, there were, there were questions that I would ask that would get very defensive responses, and they would move on. And I couldn't figure out where the defensiveness was coming from. So I kept reading, I kept talking to people in our district, superintendents, things like that. And I, I got to the point where I, I hadn't been able to figure it out yet because the, the, the curriculum people are, are very knowledgeable about, about what they do. They're very passionate. They, they are, and, and when they present, they sound like what they're doing is, is best practice for reading instruction. But again, as I moved along, I, I knew the data weren't good, and this is where superintendents come in. They, they're looking at their data, they know their data aren't good. They know something is wrong, but they don't know what. And again, their curriculum staff sound very knowledgeable. And, and when you're listening, and again, I was in this position, as I think superintendents are, it's really hard to discern what needs to change with, with, you know, the overview of our curriculum, unless you know a lot.
I'm gonna stop you, I think we're seeing your notes. Can you go back to the original slide?
Oh, yes, shoot, yeah, that's why I, I'm gonna shut the sharing off.
There you go.
There we go. Now you just have that. Okay, thanks.
Wait, we just saw you now.
Yeah, okay, that's, thank you. Okay, so then, um... Let's see, where was I? So, um, and again, they, they, gotta find their place now. Um, they don't, they don't know enough, many of them, you know, some superintendents, like I know if you were here a few sessions ago for this series, Brent Conway, he realized on his own, he needed to learn and was self-taught and learned as much as he could to be able to lead. But it takes the superintendent to have that knowledge to be able to even start their, their journey of learning. And some are resistant to it, others are open to it. My superintendents were always open to it, but I know others have, you know, have not been across the country. So, um, anyway, so the learning part is, is really important for superintendents. They don't know, they don't have to know the nuts and bolts of how to do this, but they have to know enough that they can lead it. They can survive the pushback from, from staff, the complaining, whatever might happen. They have to, have to know enough that they're on the right track. They also have to be brutally honest when confronting their data. Again, the growth, growth is not necessarily what you want to hang your hat on when we know that it's possible to treat 95%, or treat my medical vocabulary. It's possible to teach 95% of kids how to read. Another big part is hiring and knowing you have the right leaders in place. And again, this requires a great amount of background knowledge about what a good system of scientific reading instruction looks like and what leaders, what knowledge leaders have to have to be able to lead that system effectively. They also have to come to the acknowledgement that their teachers and, and reading specialists are not necessarily coming from universities, for the most part, with the knowledge that they need to be able to lead a system of scientific reading instruction. Um, another thing is just the, the tendency to tweak around the edges. You have a reading system that you like, you've been doing for many years, but you know it's deficient. And I really, I've seen the tweaking happen, and I've seen how much work it is for teachers to learn something new. And yet, they're putting all that effort into learning something new, and they're not getting any results because it's, it's the, the system itself is what needs to change, not just this, you know, a part here and a part there. Another, I think too, it's important to, to have a consultant, unless you have an excellent, well, very knowledgeable leader in your curriculum department to lead this. I think, and it, I think it's important that the consultant has done work in a district your size because it's a very different job to, to switch a district that's very small or everybody knows each other, or compared to a district like Milwaukee, 80,000 students in Green Bay with 20,000. It's just a different system and requires some different approaches to, to making those changes. The, I also think a consultant comes in and doesn't have any prior relationships with anyone in the district. Changing reading instruction, as many of you know, is an highly emotional event. And I think it helps to have a consultant that doesn't have any prior relationships with people, aren't hurting people's feelings, and because they feel like, you know, they, they should be treated better, those kinds of things. So I think that objectivity is important too. Also, I think the consultant can help you get early wins if they worked and created a very successful, efficient system for reading instruction. They know the easy pe, the easy places to help teachers see that if they do travel down this road and learn what they need to learn, that they will likely get better results than what they're getting now. So, next I'm gonna move to the school board. People have asked me, I was president of our school board for eight years, you know, why can't you just tell them what to do? And I've, I've thought about that and...
Can you tell us how big your school district was? It's a big one.
Yeah, we have 20,000 students. We have 20, oh, I think about 27 elementary schools, four large high schools. We have a charter, our district's charter, a project-based high school. We have an alternative high school for kids that have been struggling. Anyway, so that's, and we have...
So, because just perspective, you know.
So, yeah, lots of schools, lots of principals. Very difficult really for the person in charge of curriculum to know every day what's going on in 27 elementary schools. So then, uh, so the, the school board's job really is to hold the superintendent accountable. Most school board members have no experience in education other than they were students at one point. And they probably have kids who are students or were students in our district. But, um, so they don't know a lot about reading. I mean, I, again, didn't know anything when I started 18 years ago and just put myself on this path of learning. And our job really as a board is to hold the superintendent accountable. But if you look at, it's, it's kind of a, you want to hold them accountable to something that makes sense, that's doable, that you have the, the ability to achieve. And we knew, so I, I never put that out there as we want this goal because I could see that maybe there weren't all the pieces in place. We had people really working very, very hard, but I felt like there were pieces in place, but if I set a goal like that, it would just put more pressure on people and they wouldn't necessarily be successful. So that's why I worked really behind the scenes in the education part of it, talking with lots of people, our curriculum people, our superintendent, things like that, just trying to build up capacity for setting that kind of a goal. And then the board's role is actually not to be in the weeds of curricular decisions. Again, that's the superintendent's job to lead that and to allow his, his or her curricular people to lead that. And if you're, again, if you're, if you're looking around, there's not necessarily districts that you can follow their lead on because I think many, many districts are struggling with all of the same things with regard to reading instruction. And I really believe that the school board, the school board cannot lead this change. It will not be effective. It just puts a lot of pressure on a lot of people. It really needs to come from superintendent as a proposal to the school board. But if the superintendent has decided to make that change, they also have to bring the board along. The board needs to know the, the reason. They need to have some background knowledge about scientific reading research and how it's, the structured literacy is different from balanced literacy and those kinds of things, because they're gonna get a lot of pushback. If the, if the superintendent starts to change like this and people start complaining, I know this happened in another district far from Wisconsin, but their union got involved and basically, you know, obstructed the entire initiative. And so if the board is getting a lot of pressure from either staff, the union, community members who think it's a bad idea, all of those kinds of things, then they not, they might not be able to hold strong if they don't have the background knowledge that this is something we need to do, even though it's, it's making a lot of people unhappy. I'm looking at my time here, 10 more minutes. So Donna had asked me a week ago, do you think board members should be trained? And as I said, I think they should have background knowledge. I know they're, Donna, you were at the school board convention. And I think that that's a good place to have presentations about scientific reading research and things like that. But again, it's not, but the, it should not be with the goal of having the school board take over and determine that this is what we're doing. It needs to really be the school board superintendent team. But, but more knowledge certainly is only gonna help, help strengthen that, that team. And then, of course, the superintendent is hired by the board. And so this is kind of where things, again, could go south. If the board is, if the board doesn't understand scientific reading research and the superintendent understands it back and forth, backward and forward, and wants to initiate a change. If the board doesn't know enough, they might, they could very well say, no, you're leading us in the wrong direction, and then the superintendent's job is on the line at that point. And again, the superintendent is hired by people that don't have necessarily, it's not required that they have a background in education. So that's just sort of something out there that makes this, I think, a little bit more complicated for superintendents. And then lastly, I just want to briefly talk about legislation. One of the things that I've seen with legislation that, that has passed, and I'm talking about, I don't know, over 10 years ago, I think, with the PALS legislation, is if districts don't really understand the purpose of an assessment that's being legislated and required, if they don't understand the purpose of that legislation, they'll do the assessment, but then they'll tell you it's a total waste of time. They don't know why they have to do it because they don't, they haven't been brought up to speed about what that assessment can tell them and how that assessment can inform instruction the next day or the next week or how they group people and all those things that really good assessments can help you do. And again, this is, I'm not sure, I've thought about this a lot, and I'm not sure where the best levers are for enacting change. I mean, I think legislation has a role, but again, if it doesn't, if it isn't backed up by districts that are clamoring for this new assessment they've been asked to give because they know how helpful it's going to be, then it becomes another mandate, an unfounded mandate, and, 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 uh, and then it's, it's not even, you know, it's not helpful assessment. And I think that, um... Another thing that, that sometimes happens is, and this is not done maliciously, it's really done, I think, out of a lack of knowledge. But a, a piece of legislation might come forward, and because people that are doing balanced literacy think it's research-based, they think when they add some phonics, they're following science. They, you know, they don't quite understand the big picture of how to enact scientific-based reading instruction. They make the changes, but they're not made in a way that are going to actually result in positive results. And again, a lot of effort is spent on something that's been mandated. It's not helping their instruction because the, they, uh, they don't necessarily know enough to, to be able to, to interpret it for each student, so to speak. And a lot of people have talked about, you know, how to enact or how to teach structured literacy and the importance of that. And again, I think that that's just a knowledge gap and something that needs to be filled. I don't know if legislation can actually fill that gap. Again, I, I just, I think that it's, there has to be purpose, either whether it's a university or, or, or a school district. They have to want to really make those changes that are legislated because if they don't really want to make those changes, there are ways that they can make them good enough that seems to satisfy the, you know, the requirements coming from, from the bill. So again, it's not, it's not to say legislation isn't worth looking at, but, but there are some challenges with that, especially when it's an unfunded requirement of districts. And then they, instead of replacing an assessment, they put it on top of what they're already doing. And that's where it feels very humorous to, to teachers. And they feel like they're assessing all of the time and things like that. So at this point, that's, uh, all I was going to cover. And I thought I'd leave 15 minutes or so to answer questions, if anybody has questions.
Yes, let's open it up for questions. I really like to see what your thoughts are about the position of a school board member and how they work with the superintendent and the school, you know, the school district, how that works all together. We had a interesting, when we went to the WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Board conference in January, it was just really great to meet all these school board members who, many of them are, are up in age and they are serving, they are serving their community. And so they don't really have a sense of, you know, the issues unless, unless they're educated about them. And I think, I think it's important to have our school boards have some sense of how to teach reading. I, I mean, if they're going to be influenced by the people in the district, we would like for them to have some information to make good questions and, you know, feedback that's appropriate instead of just getting information and saying, well, yeah, that's all good. You can't make a educated decision unless you have that information. Any one? Okay, we got one in the chat. Let's see here. Okay, so someone, Allison, said, I see some people from the Illinois side of the border. I'm wondering if Jake or Annie could comment on the moves made by a school board, the Illinois School Board Association in the context of this talk from Dr. Warren.
So, hi, I'm Jake. I'll turn my video on, I don't know how good my internet is right now.
Hi Jake.
But we have, I know, started this the last six months, and we're really just studying the background of it right now. And we're gonna be working with Daniel Thompson out of Montana here in the next year to kind of get this going.
She's amazing. She's amazing. Good job.
We're starting, we're starting that, and it really started with me and the reading specialist. It's just kind of, we have the upside-dyeing triangle, so we've been talking to the board. We've got a presentation next May to discuss it more, but really are, we haven't had too much. I mean, our board's very supportive, so, so it's kind of been somewhat of an easy transition with the board, at least. This is my first year as a superintendent here, but I was here as a principal earlier, so. There's not much in Illinois that I've seen so far, but it's definitely starting to kind of, I've seen more lately as we've been, I follow way too many Facebook groups, probably like many of you in all this, but it consumes my time in that.
Uh huh. Yes, we get lots of complaints from Illinois teachers. It's very frustrating for them.
Yeah, so we're looking at doing the top 10 tools with all our K through 4 teachers next year.
Excellent, good choice.
It'd be nice, we got the letter sponsoring, like a lot of school are, and what is it? Wisconsin or North Carolina that's doing that? But like you said, Illinois really hasn't gotten on board yet for all that stuff.
You know, you, if you do, if you do top 10 tools, you should be good. That'll give you a real nice foundation. And I, I think Nell Thompson will require you to do that. That's part of the plan. So you do it, you know, one, I think. So it's a wonderful way to do it. All right, well, good luck to you and stick around and keep meeting with us every month. We, we're real glad to hear from you. All right, do well. Annie?
Hi, I just had a question for Brenda, kind of on the school board side. So I'm an instructional coach, kind of like Jake. We've been doing this, me and my principal, for like a year. Kind of like Jake, we've been doing this, me and my principal, for like a year and a half, but just at our school, having great success. And a lot of excitement, and we're starting to see it in our data, so it's all really good. Our district is still really balanced literary literacy, so we've been kind of keeping it contained to us, but. Our coaching, the instructional coaching team gets together quite a bit, and so it's starting to spread to other schools as well, which is also great. And I talked the curriculum dean into getting fifty of our teachers' letters trained. So my school took eight of those fifty spots, so I'm really excited about that. And she didn't even, she hadn't even heard of it, so I kind of snuck it in there, had a good time when they were looking for some PD to offer to the district, so. That's exciting, so we have some positive movement, but the last board meeting I listened to, when they were talking about elementary literacy. One board member in particular was asking some like really great questions, that was on the edge of my seat. To hear the answer to, and it was all, I don't know if she knew it was science of reading aligned, but just really good questions, so. I didn't like the answers that were given to her by our curriculum people, and I wondered about reaching out to this board member because. I think she's looking for information, but I just didn't know the best way to do it, if I could send her like the Emily Hanford podcast. And I don't want to like offend her by, like, assuming she doesn't know. Anything, you know, like, maybe she's already listened to the podcast, I'm just wondering about the best way to go about it, I thought of like sending her anonymous questions. But then I was like, that's probably not a good thing to do, but she's so close, she's like scratching the surface to like expose how. Balance literacy and guided reading just isn't working for us as a district. So I want to like help her, but I also like, I'm worried about kind of getting in trouble at the same time, so. Brenda had some advice.
So your, your principal and you are leading in your, in your school? Yeah, it's always hard to know what the politics in each district are. You know, I I think that if 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 you talked with your principal and just said, hey, do you think this is a good idea? You know, I just, I'm not gonna, all you, all you would do is just say, I heard your questions at the school board, we're doing a lot of work in our school with. With however you want to describe it. And we're seeing some good results and it seems like you're asking really good questions, and I thought these resources might be helpful for you. I think if you have your principal's blessing, that's usually pretty good, how big is your school district?
Um, it's pretty big, it's Rockford, Illinois, so there's thirty-plus elementary schools.
Oh, okay, so similar in ours, yeah, and so often what will happen is if the principal's not comfortable, they will check with their their. Supervisor and and just see, I do think you're you're good to to think ahead to say, well, I don't want to just do this. Out of the blue, and I'm trying to think of, because I don't know that. You know, most staff that that talk with or email us are more just responding to specific school board things. But again, I I think it's important for you to have at least a principal's blessing that you send this to your school board member. And that the school board member, if if it were me and I got that, I I would probably say, oh, this is really interesting, you know, can I meet with you? I'd like to learn more about what you're doing and things like that, or she, she may not be that interested, but. It just opens a door and lets and lets them know where something like that is happening, if they want to go see it. Because I know we've had schools in the past, not so much, well, actually, yeah, I, many years ago, I spent a lot of time in our schools looking at reading. Instruction and just seeing what we were doing and things like that, so. If she has time during the day, she may, you know, just want to come observe you in the working or a teacher that's willing to have her in the room, things like that.
Yeah, that would be great, we're, yeah, we're open to all that, so that's really good advice, I'm gonna try that and I will.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Very good, any other questions? Okay, I don't hear any, so next month, on May twenty-seventh, we are going to have Angie Hanlin with us. Angie is currently the superintendent in the Thorpe School District in. Northern, northwestern Wisconsin, she comes from Missouri where she was an award-winning principal. And actually changed her school around, her story is remarkable, don't miss it. So we'll see you next month, thanks for coming. Let me know, let me know. If you, if you need anything, you can reach us at the Wisconsin Science of Reading Facebook page or at. Donna at W I dash reads dot org, thanks for being here today, see you soon, bye.